Charles Moore and our Pledge of Allegiance by Will Hancock. So Reverend Charles Moore is the new Senior Pastor at First Baptist Church. Would you like to come on up? And I'll introduce you to everyone. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Paducah.
A real treat to be here.
Well, it's great to have you and your family here and your wife's Eileen and you have a son Joshua.
Correct.
And so I know that Paducah will certainly welcome you with open arms. I'm sure they already have.
They already have, yes.
So it's a blessing to have you here.
Thank you, likewise.
So Reverend Moore will lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for the gift that Paducah is to us, for the great city that we're privileged to live in, the great community that we're privileged to serve, the wonderful opportunities it holds for all of us and for so many others, the wonderful environment, the friendliness toward our families, and the appreciation that we have one for another tonight. Lord, we give you praise for all of that. In an age of self-indulgence and selfishness and moral relativism, we pray for the leadership of this great city to be strong and courageous, filled with wisdom from on high, to serve you, to serve each other, to serve the people, to serve graciously, and to have wisdom that only you can give for leadership for such a time as this. We pray, Lord, in a day of discord, for civility and a real, genuine sense of community in Western Kentucky. And we would pray, God, that the leadership team that is here, that represents the city of Paducah, would work together for the common good and that all of it, at the end of the day, would give you praise. We thank you for your presence tonight, for your wisdom and your leadership and your grace and truth. We pray it in Christ's name, the Prince of Peace. Amen.
Will. Will is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and he is the son of Sid and Justin Hancock and a senior at Paducah Tillman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Will. Do we have any additions or deletions, City Manager?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I have a proclamation tonight. To whom, to all to whom these presents shall come, whereas Housing America is a campaign designed to educate the American public about the critical role safe, decent, and affordable housing plays in all aspects of life for individuals, for families, children, and young adults, seniors, persons with disabilities, and our veterans, as well as for our communities and the national economy. And whereas, according to current estimates, on any given night, there are nearly 650,000 homeless nationwide and up to 3.5 million persons who experience homelessness at some point throughout the year. And whereas affordable housing is the foundation for virtually all of life's outcomes, and those who are well housed are more likely to be healthy and receive a good education. And whereas the mission of Housing America is to raise national awareness for the need for and importance of safe, decent, and affordable housing throughout the stimulating partnerships and encouraging the ongoing commitment on the part of the federal, state, and local governments. And whereas the city of Paducah, which has over a period of many years endeavored to address affordable housing and community development needs and has been successful in doing so using a combination of local, state, and federal resources, hereby endorses the Housing American Campaign, its goals, objectives, and purposes, and in so doing, recommits itself to meeting the affordable housing and community development needs of the community. Now therefore, I, Gail Kayler, Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Housing America Month and encourage all citizens of Paducah to be aware of how public housing contributes to our communities. And I know we have some folks in the audience tonight with our public housing. Would any of you all like to come up and say something? Cal, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. It's important that this come about. I think it draws attention to the need of different kinds of housing that we have. In Paducah, I am proud to say that there are probably somewhere around 40 different providers of different kinds of housing. And I did invite a few people here to be recognized as housing providers after I kind of twisted Gail's arm. If I might, if, as I call your name, I have Jessica Jenkins. She is with the Irving Cobb. I have Linda Williams, and she's with the Jackson House and is the recipient of a million dollars and elegant new elevators. We have Danny Fugate with the City Section 8 Department, and he makes it possible with his program to put them in non-subsidized apartments, such as Von Wilson, who represents Paducah Housing.
Why don't you all come up here? Everybody can see you better on the camera.
Just right here in front?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that'd be fine, right here in front. All of these folks play a vital role in our assistance throughout the city of Paducah. We have thousands and thousands of apartments. This group of, this small group of people you see here do an excellent job in providing quality housing to families that are in need, and even families have more choices because of the Section 8 program. And I'm just very proud to work with Dan Fugate and the City of Paducah. And Mayor Kayler, Commissioners, we want to thank you for the proclamation drawing some importance to this. I just saw a narrow document that went out to thousands of housing authorities, elected officials, and individuals that said that the city of Paducah was taking the lead to do a proclamation acknowledging Housing America Month. Thank you very much, folks.
Would you like to have this, Cal?
Yes, I would.
I mean, I'd just like to comment that my father moved our family here in 1972. And at the time, the, it was Thomas Jefferson Apartments. It was later changed to Martin Luther King. But we lived there for a short time, and that, it was a, it was a big, it was a big step up for us to have that, that housing available. And my father, you know, he reminded me that sometimes life happens and you have to sit back and adjust your game. And that allowed us to do that. One other thing, I remember growing up as a kid, I would pass doors that didn't look very strong on a house. And, you know, when you're seven years old, that's the front door. That's the entryway. And if that doesn't look strong, then you're a little nervous when you're behind the door. So I always looked for doors that are strong. And when we decided to buy a house, I was checking doors out. Because, I mean, I mean, that was, it's kind of weird, but that's the way, that's the way I always looked at a house. If it's a strong door, the housing authority and the network that you got working with you is providing some strong doors. So I appreciate you.
Thank you very much for those comments. All of these people here, all of us, so much, our housing has improved tremendously in eleven years that I've been in Paducah. I've seen changes in the home, the living, the car, the Jackson House. The properties have three of them come online. The change to apartments were exceptional, and we'll assist you that, Gail, to help people have choices of good quality housing. We're not a slum business, none of us are.
Right.
Most of our assisted housing, and even our budget development, like I said, we have forty different developers, thousands and thousands of apartments. Our housing quality is pretty good in the city of Kentucky, and we'd love to be a part of it, as I know they are.
And, Richard, my mother also lived for a short time at Elmwood Court. And so, you know, I understand that there's that need there for people that need, they have a need, and you're able to fulfill that and have a safe place for them to live. And I know you maintain the property as well. And the thing I hear the most comments on is the senior housing on H.C. Mathis. You know, it's really pretty there, very pretty. And I know a lot of people are probably on the list because senior housing is really critical.
There are four hundred and ninety-five thousand people on this waiting list. Everybody here has had a waiting list.
Mm-hmm.
People. We're very pleased to be here.
Thank you all for all you do. Okay, we'll go on to our ordinances, adoption. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute Change Order 1 and 2 with Merco Inc. for construction of the Noble Park Pool Spray Pad. This ordinance, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Let me read faster.
Pause, you pause.
This ordinance authorizes, there was a comma. That's what, the mayor is hereby authorized to direct and directed to execute Change Order 1 and 2 in the combined amount of $65,671 for the city of Paducah's Noble Park Pool renovation Phase 2 project. That includes the Noble Park Pool Spray Pad project, decreasing the total contract price to $122,865.29.
Second. You know, I've heard that a lot, you know? The man says, "You never quit talking. You don't listen." Couldn't be true. Couldn't be true. All right. We discussed this last week. We're actually saving some money. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
On this, so that's good. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gall?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Ordinance's introduction. Commissioner Gall, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Housing, Buildings and Construction, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Department of Housing, Buildings and Construction, and the City of Paducah, Kentucky for additional plan review and inspection responsibilities within the city of Paducah. This agreement is for a term of three years. However, it may be canceled and described in KRS 198B.060.
Second.
Cal?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. What you see before you is just a renewal of the existing agreement that we've had for many years since we've had expanded jurisdiction here. And there are different tiers. We have the highest tier, I guess you could say, that is available. We do mechanical, electrical, and building, commercial, and residential reviews. So it's just a renewal, updating of ordinance language. They typically, they will review our ordinances to make sure they're in line with the Kentucky Building Code. And we update our personnel roster, and we, they give it back to us for approval to renew.
All right. Chief, I'm sorry. Chief, it's correct that there were a few items that we had locally that we have done away with here to be in complete conformity with the state. Is that correct?
That is correct. The most recent item that I can think of was the requirement for metallic tubing. That was in our ordinances previously, and that has since been removed. We made that change, and you all voted on it a month or two, a couple of months ago, I think, to have our ordinances in order before they went back up to the state. So we don't have anything in our ordinances that is not required under the Kentucky Building Code. So we mirror what the state has.
Chief, I'd like you to say that again, because, and maybe just me, but, you know, you hear all the time about, "Well, why does the city have so many more, so much stricter codes than the state does?"
Well, in reality, we don't. I mean, we, over the years, we've had an item or two that stuck out there, like the metallic tubing, which is conduit. There was a requirement to have that in the city limits. But by and large, we didn't have anything additional that the state didn't require. The biggest difference, I think, for people to understand is that we, because we have it locally, we have the resources to provide the services that go with having a program like that. We make the commitment to the program and provide the resources in order to do the job. When you, when you don't have that, or you're falling back to the state in rural areas, they don't have the opportunity to get to those locations as frequently as they might if you have a local entity doing it, like us. To that point, they even contract out those services to private contractors in some places. So it's a, it's really a big difference in service at the end of the day for you getting your plans reviewed. The state typically runs between 15 and 60 days, as an example, on plan review. We run about two weeks. And that's not, you know, and to the contractor's defense, that's not fast enough for them because they won't turn dirt tomorrow or today. And I don't blame them for that. Time is money, and we try to meet that need as best we can. And we continue to strive to improve that service. It's a challenge for us, too, because everybody, everybody wants that immediately. But we try to do the best we can with that.
All right.
Any questions? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay.
Please.
I think I might get all the easy ones. I move the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving the purchase and acquisition of the real property located at 5065 Concord Avenue, Paducah, McCracken County, from Betty J. Owens for the improvement of a public project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah, Kentucky, to purchase the real property located at 5065 Concord Avenue, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky. The property for purposes of the Olivet Church roadway improvement project from Betty J. Owens for the purchase price of $500,000, subject to the reservation of a life estate reserved by the Owens in and to a portion of the property to be set out in deed conveyance from Owens to the city of Paducah. And before somebody seconds it, I just have a comment. As you all know me, I will just say that you cannot manage what you do without control.
Second.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say that this has been the culmination of six years of planning and work on this project. And this parcel of land is necessary for the construction of the roadway from New Holt Road next to Kentucky Oak Mall to tie into Olivet Church Road. This will help reduce traffic congestion at the Interstate 24, Exit 4 interchange, and along US 60. It will improve the entrances at Holt Road into the mall. It will give two exits off of Olivet Church Road into the mall, so it will relieve quite a bit of traffic on 60. And of course, we know that's highly congested there. So it was good to be able to go to Frankfurt and talk with the Secretary, with Secretary Hancock and Chief of Staff Larry Bond, the City Manager, and I went up there. And this whole project hinged on this one piece of property, which we were finally able to strike a bargain on. And I would just like to thank Mrs. Owen and her daughter for working with us and making this project happen. Jeff, what do you have to say?
Oh, come on on. Slide presentation. While we're getting this ready, let me comment how proud I am to hear one of my department directors answer a question as thoughtfully as Fire Chief Kyle did, to be asked a question about why we may be perceived as being different than the others with respect to one of our programs. To hear it said passionately that we're committed to it and we have the resources is, I couldn't think of a better way to articulate that. So with that having been said, I'll try to articulate this as best that I can. How do I advance again? Oh, just this? Okay.
Okay, that lawyer right there.
Thank you.
Then you'll have to, each line. You'll have to hit it again.
Okay, this is a, obviously, a big step forward in a project that's been ongoing. And I think it bears taking just a little bit of time to reiterate the foundation behind the project, why we're doing it, where we've been, where we are, where we're going. This particular purchase tonight that's being authorized by city ordinance is a, is a significant outlay of public funds. And I think that it's in everybody's best interest to affect an understanding of why we believe it makes sense on the part of our residents to do it. Of course, this project has been, since the inception, a joint project between the city, the county, and the state of Kentucky. The city was long ago designated as a local public agency responsible for the public administration despite the fact that part of this project is in the county. Somebody had to administer it, and that is, that call was answered by the city in the form of City Engineer Rick Murphy. Project is the next phase of road improvements to Olivet Church Road. In other words, there have been improvements to Olivet Church Road that have preceded this particular project, as we all know. The northern stretch of Olivet Church Road has in fact been widened with bridge replacement already. Timeline for this project goes back quite a few years, as the mayor said, even back into the planning stages. Traffic light was first installed at Olivet Church Road and Carroll Road back in the year 2000. In the period of 2002 through 2004, saw the widening of Carroll Road and the completion of Commerce Drive and the industrial park. 2004, 2005 saw the widening of Olivet Church Road that I referred to earlier, including the bridge replacement from Carroll Road to near the James Sanders Boulevard, which is where this project will pick up. 2004, the local planning to continue the Olivet Church Road improvements began. So shortly after the earlier phase, or while it was actually still in the construction phase, the planning for this phase began. So it's been almost 10 years ago. 2006, the improvement that we are kicking into gear with this action tonight was classified, in fact, as the number one transportation priority by both the city of Paducah and McCracken County, as submitted in their annual Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Planning 2006, an interlocal agreement for the project was entered into by the city, county, and state. 2012, about a year ago now, the city and the city commission and the county fiscal court met jointly and passed a resolution in support of the project as designated to demonstrate to the state that the project had city and county support. At that time, we were lacking the final piece of funding from the state. The effort to acquire the property that we have before you tonight had been ongoing for some time, and there had been starts and stops. And the state took the position with us that it wished that the city and county be in accord with this project as designed before it would commit to the final piece of funding. So a discussion was held around that issue that evening, and the offshoot of that was an ordinance, excuse me, a joint resolution whereby both bodies respectively expressed their support for the project as designed. Currently, and since that time, right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation has picked up, which uses the $2 million of the project money that has been allocated by the state. Final design is completed. And by the way, the final design, or the actual all-project design, was the portion of the project that the city had financial responsibility for. The construction and right-of-way acquisition and utility relocations combined to cost about $8.5 million. The expense of the design was around a couple hundred thousand dollars, as I recall. So the city, at the end of the day, is bearing a very minor portion of the total expense of this. We expect construction to commence next year. Okay, this is the Olivet Church Road completion project. You see the improved portion of Olivet Church Road coming down with the kind of orange around it. And then you see what is referred to as the new connector road coming off Olivet Church Road behind the mall and eventually connecting with New Holt Road on Highway 60. Kind of a two-pronged thing here. The Olivet Church Road will be improved to three-lane from James Sanders Boulevard out to Highway 60. And the new five-lane, the connector road through the back of the mall, will in fact be a five-lane road. Public value from the project, like all good public projects, there are multiple values coming from it. Some of these have been repeated numerous times. Others have maybe been understated over the course of time. The one that I think most everybody is very familiar with is that this project is expected to divert traffic eastbound on I-24 away from Exit 4 to Exit 3, which will help clear some congestion that is currently being experienced both at the Exit 4 turn as well as on Hinkleville Road approaching the commercial property on either side. Additionally, the connector road creates easier and more orderly ingress and egress at the New Holt Road Mall entrance intersection. I wish Rick was here tonight to go over again how that intersection is going to be enhanced by these improvements, but again, you've heard that numerous times. Another value from the project is that the growth and development will be spurred, or that growth and development will be spurred on the east side of the connector road just north of the mall. We're putting a major roadway through the back of the mall. One side is primarily residential. The other side is ripe for additional commercial development, additional investment in the community. This roadway is going to make that possible. As often is the case with the public investment in infrastructure comes the incentive and the ability for private interests to invest as well, and we fully expect that to happen here. Financially, the project will see, bring the influx of eight and a half million dollars of state funding, which will obviously have an impact on the local economy. Another benefit to this project, and this is probably one that's been understated, is that the project complements the planned state improvements to North Friendship Road. And I'd like to ask Steve Irvin, our planning director, to come forward and speak to that just briefly, because again, this is something that we have not put out there probably as much as we would have liked to.
The map that you see in front of you kind of gives you a larger perspective of how the connector, the connector road fits into the transportation network. On the upper section up there, you see the existing improved Olivet Church Road, I think, I believe was done in 2002, connecting I-24 and Exit 3 to the rear entrance of the mall. The next section is the connector road that is being referenced tonight. The third section, which is red, was the existing improved New Holt Road that was done some time ago. The fourth section, which is up for discussion right now with the Kentucky Department of Transportation, is a planning study looking Kentucky 1286. And what that roadway will do is, on the bottom portion of that, you'll see US 45, which is generally Lone Oak. It'll allow Lone Oak traffic to go on a new improved Friendship Road directly up to the Regional Trade Center at US 60. And then if they want to continue north on the new connector up to the back entrance of the mall, or even up to Exit 3 if they want. So what you start to get is a collector road or a road that connects all the spines, all the different arterials as they head out of our city. They're all connected together by this one complete collector from the south to the north.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, the project is dependent on the parcel that is before you tonight to be obtained, owned by Betty Owens. It is 2.16 acres. You see it as a rectangular box. Take note particularly of how it lies with respect to the road. Obviously, that road is going to intersect it in a pretty significant way. This is not a standard right-of-way acquisition for infrastructure projects where more commonly we will need a sliver of property, perhaps a little bit of frontage, perhaps a little corner of a lot. This roadway is cutting almost diagonally through the lot. It does not encroach upon the existing structures, but it, once it is completed, it will be within about 35. But it, once it is completed, it will be within about 35 feet of the corner of the house, would be the outside right-of-way of the road itself. So it's, it's coming pretty close. It is a significant intrusion upon the property. The, the property, as I said, contains a dwelling unit with an attached garage and, and one outbuilding that I'm aware of. The dwelling unit itself is 1,454 square foot. It's a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home with a detached garage. Again, with this purchase, the city will be acquiring that property. The property itself, in total, had an appraisal in 2007 of $159,000. We're obviously paying more than that. This is a very atypical acquisition for an infrastructure project for the reasons I have stated. And there are also additional reasons why it is not a typical acquisition. There you see an aerial of the dwelling and the outbuilding. There you see how the right-of-way, which is in yellow, lies with respect to the rest of the parcel. A is the portion of it that has the home and the garage on it. C would be the, what we would call the third piece of the parcel. That would be that portion of it that remains on the other side of the road after the road is put in. As you can see from that map, adjoining parcel C and moving out up towards the ceiling, if you will, is additional outlots that we believe will be significantly impacted by the placement of this road through there in terms of setting them up for access and development commercially. That, as stated earlier, will bring about additional investment, additional hopefully retail opportunities in the community. So at the end of the day, we have three tracks there, and we will be, in the case of the right-of-way itself, let me, I'm getting ahead of myself here. The, the track that has the home on it is, will be 8.87 acres. That will be purchased from Betty Owens with a life estate, as the, as the ordinance says. The city will sell that down the road at some point in time and expects to get, obviously, a return on that. I cannot speculate today what that might be. But what we will have to sell is a 0.87 acre lot with a three-bedroom, 1,450-square-foot home on it. Obviously, with the road a little closer to it than what there used to be, but nonetheless. Track B is the portion of the purchase that will be dedicated for the right-of-way, for the road. We have had that appraised, and we expect to, as we have with all parcels that have been acquired to date for this project, receive reimbursement from the state for that, for appraised values, which we approximate, approximate to be around $80,000. The last parcel that remains, as I earlier described, on the far side of the road, right-of-way adjoining the commercial tracks, is a little over half an acre. We will, we expect to be able to sell that off for commercial development, commercial use at some point down the road. How much money might we receive from that? That's, that's a matter of some speculation. Purchase records in that area show that land in that vicinity previously has sold for an average of $174,000 per acre. Not saying that's what we'll get for this, given the size of it. I think it also is a point to bear in mind and take into consideration with respect to the Owens property that adjoins developable property, that adjoins property that, with the roadway in, alongside it, takes on new value. So I think that it's reasonable to understand why, as an owner of their property, that what had formerly been an appraisal based on residential use, without that kind of infrastructure around it, that there's a different perspective that can be applied to that value-addedness, if you will, with that roadway going in there. So that is a broad overview of the project that I, I hope puts some perspective on this. This was a negotiated purchase. It is not a typical kind of right-of-way purchase because of its size, because of where it was located with respect to commercial property, and because of the value-addedness of the property that came with the, will come with the installation of the roadway. One other point I would mention about the negotiation is that the final position of Betty Owens was that if she was going to sell, she was going to sell the entire parcel, rather than just the right-of-way portion of it. So those were the conditions that, that this purchase was negotiated under. Any questions? Anybody has?
No, but I, I think, you know, all of us understand the importance of infrastructure for economic development throughout the community, and this is just one piece of that.
Any other comments?
No, other than, Mayor, I would like to thank you and Jeff for your patience and the time that you both have put in. I know that you spent a lot of time at the table getting to this point. So I, we as a commission really appreciate your efforts.
We really do.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, do, do we have a city manager's report tonight?
I was, last week, at my annual conference and was not here for the resolution proclaiming. I believe next week is Public Power Week, but, okay, next week. I wanted-
That is the proclamation.
I did.
Yeah.
I had a little something to do with it being on the agenda, though, so I knew it was going to be there. But I just want to say that having worked in public power almost my whole career, that the city of Paducah, as, as is the case with all cities, that chose at one point in time to own their electric utility is, is very, very privileged to do so. And, you know, a couple of points I want to make about that, and I realize that there's been some controversy recently around electric rate changes. But the fact of the matter is, the decision-making process on matters such as rates are done locally, by the local people, residents of the community. Those people are accessible, they're accountable, and, and that's not the case when, when a city is not served by, by a locally-owned electric utility. You, you don't have the access to the decision-making process or the input that you have. I think it's also important to note that with ownership of a local electric utility, that all the, all the revenues, profits, if you will, are kept in town. They are not payments to out-of-town stockholders and that sort of thing. So all the financial benefits of, of a publicly-owned utility stay in the community that it serves. One other thing I want to mention, this Friday from 4:30 to 6:30 here at City Hall will be the pending ceremony for newly-appointed Chief Brandon Barnhill. So I think, I know the commission's all aware of that, department director, so I'd encourage everybody in the community to consider coming down and, and congratulating, perhaps meeting Chief Barnhill for the first time, whatever the case might be, this Friday at City Hall from 4:30 to 6:30. That's all I have.
We had a great barbecue festival. Commissioner Gall, do you want to say anything about that? I know it was, the weather was perfect.
The weather was perfect, but it, it was overwhelming, the crowds that we had. But I could not, I can't say enough about the fire department, the police department, refuse, the city just went above and beyond. And parks, Les Evans and Mike Ornduff, their, their crews, day and night, round the clock, everything. I just can't say enough. I'm so thankful that we have people that put in 110% all day and all night in that festival. And other festivals like that would not be possible in this community without them, and we are so appreciative.
And those, I just want to comment and just echo that is, a lot of times, we, when we go to festivals, we don't see that. I mean, we see it, you know, sometimes you look in a crowded room and you don't see anybody. But without those, without that effort and that, that infrastructure there, our, the event would not have been as successful. Those guys, they do a great job. And this is like the 19th year, and it's getting better. The event's getting better. Our workers are doing a great job. So that's a great recipe for continued success, I think.
I think so.
So next year will be the 20th year.
Yep, it will be.
So that will be a big year. So I'm sure that Suzie and David are planning something special for next year?
I think so. I've, I've heard-
They won't tell us, of course.
No, they will not. I've heard tidbits, is all I've even heard, so.
So next, is it next weekend we have, or is it the next one? Sheryl Crow is the 19th in Oktoberfest.
Yes, yes.
So we still have some more fun things going on downtown, reasons to come down and shop at the stores and-
Yeah, I see that too.
Just nothing ever going on, is there? Just can't get it all sandwiched in.
Anything else we're supposed to talk about?
Well, I, I'm sorry. Only telling that. Speaking of downtown, right on the corner where C.C. Coons used to be, what is it, Sandy's now?
Mm-hmm, Shandy's.
Shandy's.
Mm-hmm.
I've had, I had about three or four people over the last couple of weeks talk about the road right there, right into the market house, the brick, and-
Speed bump.
Yeah. It's starting to, it's starting to look like a moat, but it's, it's, it's getting deeper. And I know once before, we had talked, it's been years ago, you kind of have to handle that with kid gloves because of the historical implications. And it, it's, when that road was put in there, I mean, there weren't like eight-ton trucks pulling in there and, you know, doing what they do. So I don't know what, we can have our guys look at that and see what, what we can do to alleviate that without sounding the historical alarm. But it, it's pretty, some folks just avoid that whole area right there. So, I mean, we should be able to look at that and get a report on what we could do, if anything.
I know Rick isn't here tonight to, to address that, but I know there are some infrastructure issues under that brick, and it would be a huge project. But we could have Rick talk about that when he comes back, give us kind of a report on it.
That'll be great.
Yeah.
I travel everywhere every morning.
Yeah. Get a little shaky after that.
We don't have an executive session tonight. All right?
No.
Commissions adjourn.